All right, welcome. We're opening up this public hearing on the public school budget for the 2014-15 school year for the Rhinebeck Central School District. And I am turning over this hearing, it's Tuesday, April 8, 2014. I'm turning over the hearing to our superintendent, Joe Caitlin.
Thank you, Deidre. For those of you who are new to the process, what we, well, a couple of things. The state of New York, in its infinite wisdom, requires that boards of education hold a public hearing on their budget approximately a week before the budget vote. Budget vote is May 20th, so around May 13th is when we're required to have a public hearing on the budget. As it so happens, boards of education have to adopt their budgets by around the 22nd, 23rd of April.
It kind of varies.
Yeah, it's usually around that time. By some oversight, somebody missed the fact that if you hold a public hearing about a month after a board has adopted a budget, yet a week before the public votes on the budget, that there's somehow any positive outcome that comes from that, giving people an opportunity to weigh in on the budget. So, this board, for quite a few years, has actually had two budget hearings, the required one on May 13th, and this hearing, the non-required one, before the board adopts a budget. So if there is any input that would help the board in making that final decision, there's an opportunity to get that input into the mix. So, that's why we're having this tonight, and the board is scheduled to adopt the budget this evening, although they can, in fact, defer that until as late as their next meeting on the 22nd of April and still be within the state's guidelines. The second thing that I wanted to note is that when the board approves or adopts a budget to go to the voters, they are adopting a sum of money. They're not adopting this position or that program or whatever. They're adopting a sum of money, and we try to identify, to the best of our ability, the kinds of things that that sum of money is going towards supporting, especially if it involves any new programs or services. So, people in the community, we can tell them, this is what your budget is supporting. But when you vote on a budget, you're voting on that bottom line, $30 million, 851, 358 figure, and that's what people are voting on, an amount of money. So, with that having been said, I thought we would take a few minutes tonight to bring the board and members of the community who are here kind of up to speed on what's happened over the last couple of weeks of a process that started back in December when we provided some ideas to the board as to things we might be interested in looking at, depending on what kind of budget support might be available. So, two things happened since our last meeting. One thing that happened was the state adopted a budget by their April 1 deadline, and fortunately for our school district and many others, we stand to receive about $88,000, what was the exact, 86 and change?
Eighty-six, two ninety-nine.
Yeah, thank you.
It's the number I remember.
Yeah.
Or it could be eighty-two ninety-nine.
You'll recall, under the governance budget, we were slated to lose a little bit of state aid. So, we actually came out to the better in terms of the state aid picture, although not by much. Most of that additional aid came from the state's reduction of the gap elimination adjustment figure, about 20 percent, maybe a little less than 20 percent of that gap elimination adjustment amount is what is providing us with the additional aid. So, that's a good thing, not only for Rhinebeck but for school districts around the state. This is the amount of money that the state began withholding a number of years ago when the state was in a serious, serious fiscal crisis, the one that had first hit, and felt that they needed to withhold aid from school districts in order to offset that deficit at the state level. We were since at a point where the state has a $2 billion surplus such that they're able to give homeowners rebates to freeze their taxes, yet they still continue to withhold. For us, it's almost $450,000 a year, so we're getting about 80,000 of that in state aid this year. So, that's actually good news. One of the funky things that happened as part of the budget process was, and Tom can explain this much better than I can, I actually should just turn it over to him, but one of the features of the budget that we had been told by our friends in the comptroller's office to plan on did not play out in the state budget. Thus, we had to recalculate our tax levy limit, and of course, it went down. So, our tax levy limit is actually lower than what we thought it was going to be when we met two weeks ago. Tom, if you'd give a brief explanation of that, I'd appreciate it.
And the comptroller, a few days after we received word of the state aid runs, they told us that previously, prior to putting our tax cap information in, one of the items that they told us to take out of it, out of our state aid figures, was the recalibration of our building aid. This has been talked about for a couple of years. Within the state laws, once a, when you do your building and you go out and you pass your bonds and that, you have an assumed interest rate that is set for the entire state. To give you an example, we might have gone out to borrow it at 3.5 percent, but the state said, no, 3 percent. Everybody gets 3 percent, that's what it is for the year. So, every year, they do that. And so, you're set at that number supposedly for the life of your building aid for that particular project. But there is a provision in the law that says, you get to recalibrate it after 10 years. So, it allows the state to go back and look at an assumed interest rate and say, yeah, I know 10 years ago, we gave you 3 percent on that, but now you can get it for 2 percent. So, I don't care if you did go back and refinance or not, but you really could and it should be 2 percent. So, they go through and calculate everything on the 2 percent. That was in the initial governor's proposal that they were going to recalibrate this year. So, the comptroller said, go through, and as if those monies were going to come out of your state aid. Subsequently, the budget passed, and that particular provision was taken out. So, they said, okay, everybody who took those monies out of your state aid runs, now you can't. So, we put the money back in, and what it does, basically, it's only about $7,000 for us because we really only have two old issues, and we're just about done with it. It is what it is. So, it's about $7,000 that we're getting in state aid that we weren't planning to get in state aid. So, in essence, what it does is it moves it from state aid to tax. Since we're getting in state aid, you can't take it from the taxpayer. Basically, it's $7,000 was taken out of the tax cap because the recalibration did not occur, but it could occur next year. And we're almost done with those issues, so it won't be a thing. Where you may have a real issue, not even say it won't even really be an issue because we refinanced it, so the interest rate we get, our assumed interest rate, will be better than whatever the, you never know, I can't say that for a fact, but whatever recalibrated interest rate is, we'll be a lot closer to it, maybe even under what it's supposed to be. So, that's a year-to-year thing, and that's something that's brand-new, that's always been in law, but it wasn't until a couple of years ago that they said, yeah, I think we're going to do it the same way. But it just always gets taken out at the last second. So, that's the reason for it, so we had to recalibrate it, and so, our tax levy, our maximum allowable tax levy is $25,974,516, which is 1.88 percent versus the 1.91 percent that we've been talking about throughout the budget process.
Okay, Tom? Thanks, yeah. Anybody have a question for Tom about that? Just to let you know why that number has shifted relatively recently. In terms of the overall process, we started back in January with a rollover budget of 3.95 percent, and over the course of several months and five drafts, our current budget increase is 1.87 percent. So, we are, at this point, below the tax, the maximum allowable tax levy increase. So, we're in the zone, but just barely, but as numbers have firmed up since January and through February and March, we've been able to reduce that overall spending increase by, like I said, we started at 3.95 percent, then we're down to 1.87 percent, and unless the board makes additional changes this evening, that would be the number that I would, and that we are recommending that you adopt as a budget figure to go to the taxpayers, to the voters for their review and consideration on May 20th. As you can see from that budget history, package of information that you got in your board packets, we made some changes, some shifts in budget items, as recently as just last week before you got your packet on Friday. Again, you know, a lot of tweaking here and there. Tom, I'm not sure if you want to bring attention to any particular item or items, but if so, this would be a good time for that.
The items that were added this particular time was a Level 3 computer technician, and the addition of the curriculum council that Marvin has spoken about, curriculum governance council. So, those items were added to the budget.
We had also had the technology club.
The technology club was also added for co-curricular, and of course, the pluses and minuses with the benefits with that. We were able to offset some of the Level 3 computer technician by being able to reduce BOSI services at the computers because we'd be taking over a number of those duties internally, and we'd no longer need BOSIs to provide that for us. So, in essence, this final, this last draft adds an additional 125, almost $126,000 to it, to bring that number up to, you know, $30,851,000, 358, which is a 1.87 percent budget to budget, which happens to be the same amount as the tax levy. And at first, I was very confused by that, but when I looked back and went through it, all my other revenues went up by 1.87 percent also, so that was the reason for it. I had to bring it out a couple of places just to make sure, right, because I've never had that happen to me before, where budget to budget and tax levy being the same. This budget is $2,776 less than the maximum tax levy, so a little bit under. And also, on top of that, a part of the governor's legislation is that homeowners would receive the increase back in the check if we stay under the maximum allowable tax levy limit. So, that's what this plan does. So, theoretically, the homeowner shouldn't see an actual increase in their taxes. They will pay the taxes upfront, but they're supposed to be getting a check. Members?
Yeah, right for the election.
Giving that back to the homeowner. Don't know all the details about it, how they're going to figure that out. I don't have any clues how they're going to figure that out.
And they won't be getting a check from us. They'll be getting it from the state of New York.
It does be really, really interesting to figure out how they're going to come up with that, who paid their taxes, who didn't pay their taxes, who was actually homeowner at the time. Confusing, but I'm waiting to see how they do it, and I'm looking forward to it.
Also, when you're, excuse me, also when your packet, the other component of the whole budget scenario, part of it is the expenditure plan, the spending plan, part of it is the revenue side of it, because we need to obviously raise revenues to support the spending plan. And that tax levy limit that Tom has been talking about is where you see the outcome of expenditures versus revenues, and we're in the place we need to be in terms of the revenues. One of the things that we are, that we have not done in putting together the revenues to support this proposed budget is we have held steady the amount of fund balance that we're proposing to use to reduce taxes to the same amount that we used in the current year's budget. So, there's no increase or decrease there. We would like eventually to be able to decrease that gradually so it doesn't have a, so doing so doesn't have a significant impact on the tax levy and tax rates. But at this point, we are able to hold that number steady, so we're recommending that as part of, part of a plan to manage our budget over the long term here. So, I guess we can open it up to questions or comments?
If there are questions, I mean, we definitely have a presentation later that will include the position that we're talking about adding. So, questions specific to that position?
Yes, Steve will be here to talk to that.
...presentation.
And the technology club advisor, is that sort of bundled in with what we're going to be hearing later, or is that a sort of separate?
Yes. We'll address all things technology at this point.
Excellent, okay.
So, would this be an appropriate time to talk a little bit about the, I know we're talking about a number here, a whole number, but the AIS question I had for you, because it impacts a little bit about the choices that we're making for where the money's going.
Well, that's really up to the board. My suggestion would be to allow members of the public who might have comments to do that. We have all evening essentially to have that discussion before we actually have to vote the number or not, as you wish. So, that's just my suggestion.
No, that's good. Thank you.
Would any member of the public like to speak? A question, a comment? Now, it would be the time, although there are times built into our public comment section. All right, if not, I mean, I would say, like, just my preference at 7:25 is that maybe we take a little break, and then we have an opportunity for Steve's presentation, and then we have an opportunity on the agenda for a fuller budget discussion. So, I appreciate that there are questions about it, but I feel like it can be okay to conclude the hearing right now and take that up later as a full package instead of trying to do it all in the hearing process. So, if you're all agreeable to that, and there are no comments from the public, then that concludes this public hearing, and we'll take a break for five minutes, and we convene as our regular meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have time to go up? Do we have time to screw number? Okay. I don't have the time, it was like a nanosecond of pause. All right, good evening. It's Tuesday, April 8, 2014, and I'm opening up this regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District. We took a brief break after our budget hearing. So, may I have a motion to from the minutes of the March 25, 2014, regular meeting?
So, move.
By Mark. Second by Lisa Enning. Amendments? All of them favorable. It's unanimous. That motion passes, we have an opportunity for public comment. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to make any comments? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to reports and discussion, and we're going to start with an update from our director of technology, Steve Jensen, who's going to give us an update on your technology plan. So, I'm going to relocate over there. Joe's going to relocate, so you can use this, and I'll just turn it over to you, Steve. Thank you.
Steve, before you start, let me just let everybody know, or remind folks, that as a result of a very comprehensive technology audit that the board directed, conducted last year, and it was, we got lots of great feedback. As a result, the board wanted that data to be able to know what actions we would need to take over the course of the next number of years to bring our district up to speed in terms of technology. And one of the recommendations from the audit was to hire a full-time individual to be responsible for directing and leading the district's technology initiatives as well as communication. After a lengthy search and search process, we hired Steve Jensen. He started for us on December 1st. It's hard to believe he's just been with us for four months. He's got an awful lot done in four months, and a lot more down the road. So, I asked Steve to join us this evening. He spoke some at our board workshop a few weeks back on Saturday, March, I think it was the 9th, if I'm not mistaken, but anyway, about a month ago. But I thought, since we're on the cusp of adopting a budget, because there are some technology-based expenditures that we're proposing to support with the 2014-15 budget, I thought it would be a good idea if Steve came and gave you an overview of the planning process that he's been engaged in thus far, some of the things that are on the near horizon for us, and also to touch on some of the things that we anticipate engaging in several years down the road, just to keep you up to speed as to where we're at in the short term and where we may be looking to go in the long term. I would probably jump into one of Steve's slides before I turn it over to him and say that we've really just scratched the surface in terms of the planning process, but there are a number of things happening that Steve felt we needed to address sooner rather than later, but the planning process is ongoing, so you'll be hearing more from him over the course of the next year and thereafter. So, Steve, I'll turn it over to you. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I think what I want to do is start out by reminding you of, and I'll forget this needs to work, there we go, of the self-report and what some of the things that were said in the self-report. And there were basically, if you look at the first three, this comes from the executive summary. Basically, the first three recommendations had to do with curriculum, and I'm going to keep emphasizing that throughout this entire presentation, that of what technology is and what it isn't, and what I believe we should be focusing on. And that's why I was very glad when I read the self-report for the first time, that the focus was on curriculum and how you were going to improve the classroom. You know, it's one thing to have all the bells and whistles and all the toys, but it's another thing to really improve instruction. And so, if you look at that, you know, the first bullet is, first of all, we've got to know what it is that we want to teach our students, and what they need, what skills do they need to be successful? Increasing the effectiveness of technology integration with teaching, learning, and assessment. Now, that's very important when you get to how we deliver that. It changes the dynamics of a classroom when you have technology, particularly at the level that we're looking at, eventually going to a one-to-one in the district. It really does change the dynamics of a school district. And then, the third one is defining the new strategies for meeting those needs through web-based tools and programs. More and more of the applications that students are using are web-based, cloud-based, you've heard those terms before, and so, we need to prepare our students to do that. The last of this bullet here, ensuring the equity of staff, we have to really be true to teaching our teachers how to use this technology, and so, that's very important. Professional development is a piece that, again, I'll be speaking to quite a bit in a moment. Self-report also talked about reviewing the technology department and its organizational structure and the logistics of that, and then to provide accurate, appropriate, and timely information of data, and I'll speak to that momentarily. So, really, what I look at is, my job and my focus has been on curricular impact, infrastructure in devices, and I guess the word, professional development in data. So, if you look at those three bullets, that's really the overarching umbrella of what I'm looking at as far as technology is concerned. How does it affect the classroom? Obviously, school districts have been focused on common core and all the things that apply to that, and the changing of instruction and those kinds of things. Technology is really there to support. Technology is there not to be taught. We don't teach blackboards, we don't teach pencils, we don't teach those things. We teach. We teach history, we teach math, we teach those things, and we may use technology as a tool to do that. It's a means to an end. And so, what we have to look at is how, we have to look at every module, every lesson plan, every unit of study that we have, and say, how can we use technology to do this? And not that that is the answer. Sometimes, the answer is, technology's not appropriate. And so, we have to know that difference, and we have to be discerning to know when it's appropriate and when it's not, and when students can maximize their innate ability to discover. I don't know if that, you know, makes sense, but they really, we are teaching our students not to learn what we're teaching them, but to be lifelong learners, and we have to give them the tools to think that way. And I've been going to some of the faculty meetings, I'll speak to this again in a different slide, but the, I was talking about the difference between a digital native and a digital immigrant. I am a digital immigrant. I did not grow up with technology. My children are digital natives. They, it just comes to them. And there are a number of studies out there talking about how my children think differently than I do. I'm very linear. I think of things A to B to C to D, and they're, oh, no, A to Z and Q to R, and, you know, they think very divergent. And we have to recognize that that is actually a skill that we possess. The other thing is to be able to assess and evaluate. One of the most impressive things I saw recently, I was up at Saratoga Springs, and we were looking at the STEM program up there at the elementary level. Teacher, we were going around from classroom to classroom, and usually, you know, you get the standard dog and pony show, so to speak, and you walk in, they show you what you're doing and things. This one teacher was very unique. She said, no, my students are staying in my class, and I'm going to send Janie out. Now, I'm talking about a second-grade student. And there are 20 adults out there, and saying, let her present, out in the hallway, and there's this display of all the projects. She comes out, she handles herself fantastic. She talks, she articulates, this is what we did, this is our project, we built this box, we did the, and I won't get into the details of what it was. box, we did the, and I won't get into the details of what it was, but at the end, she did something that was very interesting. At the end, she said, but, you know, as I think about it, we really need to redesign the top. You know? And I'm thinking, I was maybe 25 before I ever started to even think like that because, you know, usually second graders, like, I got it done, now move on to the next thing. She's a critical thinker. She thinks very differently than I thought, or that I sometimes do. Sometimes they catch me. Sometimes my children catch me as well. So there's a lot of curricular impact. And so Mr. Krebs and I have really spent some time talking about that. And we really have to be joined at the hips, technology and curriculum, to be able to make it successful. Otherwise, we've just a bunch of toys, and that's not appropriate. It's not appropriate, and it's not fiscally responsible to the taxpayers. So we have to look at that. We also have to do the logistical parts, which is infrastructure and devices. We have to look at being able to support those things, choose the software, choose the platform and those kinds of things. And I'll speak again, I'll go into that later. Professional development, one of the things that we are looking at here is really data drives professional development. We need to be able to look at a series of scores or a series of assessments, let's say at the second grade level, and say, you know, in Mr. Jensen's class, reading comprehension's really tanking. You know, we really need to do something. It's really showing some signs of weakness. Well, then we turn around, we develop a professional development plan for Mr. Jensen and any others who might be experiencing that same issue and build that back up. We should always be constantly taking our professional development and making it targeted, targeted for the specific need. It's one thing for me to say, I think everybody should know how to do PowerPoint. Well, that may not be the case. Some of you are experts at that, some of you are novices at it. It's not that way. I should maybe, if I have anything, I should have PowerPoint level one, level two, level three, and then come in. Everybody needs to know that, but some people may not need to know that. Some people may have other weaknesses and strengths. And so this idea of professional development just being broad-brushed needs to be reconsidered strongly. And so it needs to be targeted, stratified, and really done with efficacy. And so we really need to look at that. One of the things the self-report said was that the district lacked a mission and vision statement. And they recommended, and this is just recorded right out of the report, recommended a college and career readiness statement be embedded into the district's mission and vision statement. I agree with this. Most school districts that I've worked in have always thought technology should be a separate track with its own mission, its own vision, and the schools' mission and vision are over here, and the twain shall never meet. And that's not the way it should be. It should be that the district's mission will embed technology within it and say, yes, when we use technology, I don't care whether it's a statement saying it's a 21st century learning environment, but you need to recognize that technology is an integral part of education. And to put it in there and say, yes, we want to create, or we want to develop or cultivate a 21st century learner. That's what we want to do. And I think that should stay with the district's vision and mission. So to develop that, a dialogue has to begin, and a dialogue has begun. It's one thing for everybody, you know, a bunch of people to sit around a table and say, well, I think we ought to make it this, or I think we, well, that's a bunch of amateurs and all coming from different views that may be myopic in some way. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't have diversity in those views, but what we should do is start to talk with a common theme, a common goal, that we are all unified and we begin to speak with one voice about what it is that we see with technology. So I've begun a dialogue. We have the vertical team. We've met two times so far, and we have a third meeting at the end of the month, talking about where we're looking at things going strategically. They've been very informative to me. It's really been a get-to-know meetings because I, it gave me a sense of the pulse of the district and where the barriers were, where the frustrations have been, and where the needs are. I also go to the faculty meetings every month, and I make a point to do that if there's room in the agenda, and I ask the principals for, you know, 10, 15 minutes. And for instance, last, this last month's meeting, it was about digital natives and digital immigrants. And of course, I flashed up, and much to my own embarrassment, I flashed up a picture of me in 1972 with the Afro that was on the year and all those kinds of things, you know, because I wanted them to see that all the jobs, and it was a picture of myself and four of my brothers, and we all have the same hairdo. But the point of the, the point of the lesson was basically that all the jobs that we had have changed drastically, that they're all, the job I hold didn't even exist in most school districts, in all the school districts that I know of back in 1972. So that is the future that our students are looking at, too. Many of the jobs that our kindergartners will have aren't even in existence today, and we have to think about that. We have to think about, okay, then what's the best way to prepare little Janie or little Johnny to succeed? And they, you know, we can take them so far, but we've got to let them go at some point, and they've got to be independent thinkers. And that's the best thing we can do for them. So we've done that, gone to the faculty meetings, and I do that monthly, and I'll talk about different topics at that time. The grade-level meetings, I've started at the elementary level and really wanted to hear from each and every teacher what it is that they see with technology, what kind of technology are they looking for in their classroom, what are their fears, what are their apprehensions, what are the barriers, what are their frustrations? And it's very interesting to see what they've said. It was very common across the board, and I'll talk to that. The other thing that I've done is started to meet with some students, and this is the genesis of the Gen Yes Project, and I'm going to talk to you about that shortly. But students need to have a voice in their education. And we need, and quite frankly, they have a lot to teach us, and I know that. As a digital immigrant, I know this. And so, you know, there has to be a certain sense of, you know, I had to do it as a teacher, and I do it even as administrator. There are things that they have learned quicker that I have not had the time to, because my jobs or my duties or my responsibilities, that they have learned and that they can share. And they have, they can become a contributing member of the decision-making process. So that has been enlightening to me. What is a 21st century education? It is not technology. It is not the computer. It's how you use it and to what end. And again, and I'll just point to it, but there is digital native, and that's where they are at. One of the points that I made at the elementary meeting the other day was that the parents of the children they're teaching are now becoming digital natives. They are at the age where they are native and they expect, not just, oh, that'd be nice if my teacher, you know, my daughter's teacher would be technologically savvy. No, they're demanding it. They want it. And I wanted them to, I wanted them to hear that message, that you can't slide by. You've got parents out there now saying, hey, I pay taxes, I bring my child here, I entrust my child to you, and I expect a certain level, you know, of education for my child. And they know what that level is, and they know what they want their child to learn. And many times they come, because they have the technology at home, many of them, and they know what the skill sets are that they need, critical thinking skills and those kinds of things. One of the discussions that I had with the teachers in the first meeting I met with them, I talked to them about the SAMR model, and I hang my hat on this one, quite frankly, as a, has a opening discussion about technology. And again, this is all, all these slides I'm talking about are about vision and mission. What do we see technology as being? And if somebody at the table sees it as being, you know, bells and whistles and computers and those kinds of things, and I'm seeing it as something totally different, we need to come to terms with that. We need to come together, not that one is necessarily exclusive of the other, they're integrated, but we need to be able to have that open discussion. The SAMR model really is a model, it's just an acronym, Substitution, Augmentation, Modification, and Redefinition. It is how we use technology. The first two, substitution and augmentation, is how I've seen technology used in the classroom and how it's been abused, actually. Substitution has to do with you changed a chalkboard to a whiteboard, and you're doing the same thing. You've taken the whiteboard out, and now you've put in the smartboard, and you're doing the same thing. That's just substitution. You took the typewriter out, and now you put the word processor in, and you're just typing away. That's substitution. It's a very low-level technology integration. You could have thousands and thousands of dollars of equipment in a room, and you're still doing the same thing that was done 50 years ago. That's substitution, and people have to recognize that. The next is augmentation. Augmentation has to do with, we'll use the example of the word processor. A typewriter types, a word processor, processor types, but it also can do things like I can pull up a Thesaurus, I can word check, spell check, I can look up some things, I may be able to put a hyperlink in there, put some graphics in there. I'm using it at a higher level than what I was able to before with the previous technology. I'm making it a little bit better and coming along. And again, as you can tell, this is going to climb as we go along. But modification is where we might actually pull some students together and say, hey, let's work on a common report. Let's work on a common goal here. Let's research around this table, and let's talk about fish or ducks or whatever it happens to be, and we're going to collaborate. And there's a certain degree of interaction between students. And actually, modification is a level in which the superintendent and I had the other day. I sent him this PowerPoint, and he writes back, dear Steve, check slide 24. You got a dispelling. Please resend. You know? So, you know, he caught me, and so we're corresponding back and forth. And I went, oh, yeah, I wrote back, how embarrassing, you know? And of course, now I'm embarrassed myself by telling you that, but, you know? But it really is about collaboration. We never spoke, we never even said a word to each other. He was in this building, I was in the other building, and yet we're working on a common document, and he's just, he caught a mistake. And so that's modification. That's where students are actually interacting and doing that. Google Drive, for instance, is an example that some of the students have talked to me about recently, about it's a document online where everybody comes in and modifies the document, changes the document, and it says, you know, Steve changed here, and, you know, Joe changed here, and, you know, and it marks those things and lets people know what the modifications were. So now you have a collective piece here that's been done, not just by one person, but by a group of people. And it teaches the students skills of how to work together and how to think about. And again, I go back to that second grader who said, we got to rethink this top, I got to redo this, you know? And we got to get to that. Redefinition is taking it outside of your local school, your local classroom, and you may have a correspondence with a scientist who's in Alaska, and you might be working on a project, and you're collaborating globally with people, and you're bringing that together. Researchers from MIT talking to Caltech, you know, people from RPI talking to RIT, you know, those kinds of things. That's what you, that's redefinition. And so the SAMR model basically sits there, and we have to look at what we're doing with our children and say, where am I at in the scale? You know, am I at, and sometimes I might be at the substitution scale, but recognize that you're there and say, okay, I may need to move that up, or maybe it's appropriate to be there. It's not wrong to be at the substitution level, but it may be wrong. So I guess is what I'm saying. It could be that it could be improved, and you may be able to move up to a modification or a redefinition and have them really begin to collaborate in a much higher level format. The four Cs in the 21st century classroom. This is, a lot of schools have begun to adopt these four Cs, and a lot of articles saying, I've replaced the three Rs with the four Cs, as, you know, you can see a lot of those kinds of articles. But these are the things that the 20th century, 21st century classroom dynamics should look like, should have these four things, creativity, critical thinking, communication, and collaboration. It's very, it's actually a skill to learn how to collaborate as a young child, to sit down and do that. You've got strong personalities, you've got, you know, you've got the quiet, submissive students, and you've got the overbearing students, and those things happen. And students who are going to be quiet need to find a voice, and students who tend to be in type A, they need to step back a little bit and listen. You know, and those are skills. Those are important skills to have, and not that one is wrong. It's just that you have to learn to collaborate and communicate and do it in a professional manner. And many of these things lend themselves to being a digital citizen, and you'll hear that term, digital citizen, all the time. What is a responsible digital citizen? You know, and some of you maybe who are on Facebook, you know people who don't know what that is about. They blast out and they, you know, they pontificate about this or that and the other thing, and they embarrass themselves. You know, and I used to laugh, and we used to call it the mail bombs, email bombs, you know, I'm going to CC everybody and their cousin, and I'm going to tell them what I think about this. And really, what it does is it shows that they haven't really thought about, thought that through, because a lot of times they come back and, you know, tailed between their legs and they're, I'm sorry, I should have said, you know, and those kinds of things. School is the place to make those mistakes. School is the place where it's the right place to be wrong, is what I'm saying. And that's why when we teach our students to do this thing, say, hey, wait a minute, you crossed the line here. I'd much rather have a student cross a line at, in third or fourth grade than when they are a parent holding down jobs for four kids, and they've done something, crossed the line, and they lose their job. That's kind of what our responsibility is, is to teach our students to know what those things are and how to be a good digital citizen. Integration into the curriculum, this again, you're going to hear some of this as I alluded to earlier. Units of studies need to be reviewed and modified to integrate technology. Professional development needs to be structured, stratified, and directly related to the curriculum. None of this, you know, what Steve Jensen thinks is what we're going to do today, you know, for Superintendent's Day. That shouldn't happen. It should be, what does the data tell us, and we're going to follow that. And we need to see where our weaknesses are and begin to address those weaknesses and to shore up those areas where we might have some faults. One of the things that self-audit had was a technology profile for the staff, and I'd like to conduct that. I don't think I'll have the time to do that in the spring, but I think I'll have time to do that in the fall, immediately when we come back from the summer. And that should give us a good profile of where we're at, and that should give us the skeletal framework by which we can begin some professional development. Because there are some staff here that have some severe deficits, and you have some staff here that have some tremendous strengths. And I've seen that across the board. And what I do appreciate is that they're honest about it. You know, a teacher will say to me, I, you know, I don't have it. Okay, that's fine, then we'll get you there. We'll figure out a way to do that, and come up with a plan, you know, and we'll do it. The infrastructure, one of the things, and this was clearly identified in the self-report. And so I had a company come in, an independent company, not the company that normally does our network here, because I wanted a really true independent eye on it, to do a network audit, to see what was happening. They came out with some pretty sobering things. Our network infrastructure and wiring are outdated. It is. We're talking about switches that are now approaching 15 years old from year one of Network extensions are problematic. For instance, we have a drop in a classroom, and then we have a switch or a hub sitting in a classroom, and it spiders out to five computers. That's the topology of the elementary school. And they were always complaining, we don't have any speed. It takes us 20 minutes to, you know, half the period to just log on, and, you know, you go to Google, and you're forever waiting, and you're trying. So I began to look at it. We have a tremendous pipe to the internet. It is a pipe that is fast and it's great. The problem is, is that we've got all these bottlenecks, the wiring, the switches, and the hubs are, and the way I described it to the staff is you've got this five-lane highway, and now you crunch it down to a one-lane bridge, and you're trying to get everybody across that bridge at one time, and you can't do it. It just physically can't be done. And so when you have network infrastructure like that, to change that out is very tough. It really almost requires a capital project to replace that infrastructure because of the expense, and you've got to really get into the core of the building to be able to rewire all that. Network, again, network extensions of the hubs I was talking about. They also talked about staffing concerns. They looked at the staffing and saw that we're currently understaffed with that, and we'll speak to that in a moment. Operating systems pose security, pose security issues, as you know, today is the day that Windows XP is no longer supported by Microsoft. So they've shut the door on that, so anybody who wants to come in and start to hack away at those computers can do so. Make them drones to do a cyber attack on a site or do something like that, they can do those kinds of things. There are a lot of XP machines out there. So I was reading some of the news reports even over the weekend, and a lot of ATMs and management systems, there are a lot of, I really thought the finance industry was up to speed on it, but they, the reports are saying, no, they're not, and, you know, they're going to have to get on that very quickly. And they addressed some several operational issues, just some housekeeping things that we needed. So in response to that audit and the demand from the staff and the faculty, we developed an RFP, a Request for Proposal for a Wireless Network. The district has committed itself to putting in an enterprise-level wireless network across both buildings, hallways, cafeterias, auditoriums, classrooms, everywhere. Wherever you go, I don't know if you realize it right now, but the way the wireless works around here is you can pull in a cart and plug in your little hub, and hopefully the port you put it into works, and it's, that in itself is a bottleneck. So you might have this great Wi-Fi system, but it still goes across that same one-lane bridge that I was talking to you about. So that's why we have to literally almost abandon that system, because there's nothing in it that's worth anything anymore. It's a broken highway, so to speak. So an RFP is going to go out, and the goal is to have that go out, hopefully by the end of this week. The other things that we're looking at is email systems, servers, backup, security. Those are issues that we Those are issues that we really have to address. And we need to have some support to be able to do that. And again, I will speak to that in a moment. What we saw, or what I've seen is in the classrooms K5, here's my, you know, I'm going, again, I just limited it to three bullets and saying, this is what I see as the issues. And I tried to be as succinct as possible. Obsolete equipment, unstable network. Teachers don't use it because they don't trust it. They just, I can't deal with this. I don't want to do it. I'll just keep using what I've been using. And you find some people that are out there that will try it, but really it's just not a trusted system. And the self-reported also had laid that out. 612, it's a little bit better. The equipment's a little newer. The operating systems and the network are still hindrances. The network is still a bit unstable, but there's a higher degree of trust. The faculty tend to use it more here than they do over at the elementary school. However, the student frustration is higher here because the students demand more. They want instantaneous response. So a lot of times a student will do a report, start to shut down, and it's cranking away, it's cranking away. And they go, I don't have time for this. And they put down the lid. Well, that causes a problem with the network. And all of a sudden, their profile is corrupted. Now they can't get to their H-drive where their document was stored. And now they're very upset, you know, freaking out as they would call it. You know, because that's, because they've lost or they've lost the connection. Document may still be there and we've got to reestablish and do those kinds of things. So that's what I'm seeing. It's not a totally different dynamic, but it has a different flavor to it. So getting down to the nitty gritty, what is the short term versus the long term? And what I see now that I've kind of laid this out and kind of telling you what is and why I'm suggesting to do what we're going to do. In the short term, first year, the Wi-Fi I just talked to you about, installed and operational by September of this year. That is our goal. Replace all the computers K5. They're all XP machines. They can't be protected using a software program called Deep Freeze. So they all need to be replaced. And so that's on the average of, you know, five per classroom if you think about it in that regard. And again, I'll speak to what they've decided, what they'd like to see. Teachers provide mobile computers to build capacity. I think this is critical. If teachers are not comfortable with the technology, they will not use it. I will not stand in front of 20 students and crash and burn and look like a doe in headlights in front of my 20 kids. That destroys my integrity. It destroys my, you know, and you can go on and on and on and on with that kind of train of thought. So what we need to do is provide them and get them the technology. And our goal is to give them before they leave this year, a laptop. And what they will do is they'll replace their desktop in their classroom, have a laptop that they take home over the summer, come in and provide professional development. I'm being very, you know, I'm giving you a very skeletal framework here. But when they come in, what they'll have is a docking station in their classroom. They dock it. Their smartboard comes up. Their network is established. Everything's done. They have everything. They need a keyboard or a monitor or a mouse. They can have those kinds of things, but it's a docking station. It's really almost a full operational workstation, but yet they can take it home. And they don't have to worry about jump drives and thumb drives and, you know, versions of software and the compatibility. Oh, I save this on Microsoft 2010. I have 2000, you know, whatever on my computer and I have those issues. No. Everything's on the one computer and they can use it. They're comfortable with it. They know how to use it. It's customized to them. They've developed it. They're very comfortable to have it that way. Actually, it was very interesting in the fourth grade, when I met with the fourth grade teachers. And I walked out saying, I told them, I said, man, I wish I'd thought of that myself. You know, I was a little embarrassed because they have, they do a video project where they edit video. And they want laptops. And they immediately solve a problem. Because it's very hard if you've ever tried to edit video without a mouse. It's difficult, the touchpad. And you're trying to get that accuracy. And it's just very difficult. They said, leave our monitors, leave our mice, leave our keyboards, give us four docking stations or five docking. And then I can sit there and have five stations for the cost of the docking. See, I can have five full-blown workstations that we can do those projects. And that came from the teachers. That's powerful. Because that means they're involved in the process. And like I said, I was rather embarrassed that I hadn't thought about it either. I thought about it for the teachers, but I didn't think about it for the students. So that was enlightening for me. Begin moving to a mobile technology environment. All the research leans towards this. A lot of, most of the research just leaning towards mobile devices of this nature, you know, and, but that's where we're heading. And so my focus is just there, moving on to a mobile technology. We may, and this is a discussion that Joe and I have had a couple of times about repurposing the lab. If you have, basically what we want to do at Chancellor next year is to put a cart at every grade level. So if you think about the third grade level, four classrooms, five computers in there. So let's say, let's, you have 20, do the math. You have 20 computers. Well, if I have a cart that's got 20 computers on it, they can do what they did last year or the previous years. Each take five and do what they do. Or they can sit there and say, and rotate it, round robin it, or I take 10 today, or I take... They can do whatever they want. We have enough support in the budget to be able to lift, to be able to replace what we've got there in the first year, basically. And that's what we want to be able to do. The first year is also the year that we're going to do a lot of professional development. So there's, there's two, it's a two-pronged approach here that we're trying to do with Chancellor. So if we start to do that, then if the classrooms start to become labs, then why do we need our lab? And so most districts will start to repurpose specialized equipment such as the scanner that you see here that was just recently obtained by the library. You put those in your libraries. You make your libraries your areas of specialization where all the, the equipment that you wouldn't necessarily outfit every classroom to have, but you want them to have access to it. The library is the place to do that. The media center, that's where you go to those things. So the concept of the labs, labs across districts right now is waning. It really is. Just as a short history lesson, the reason why so many labs were built over the years is because of capital projects. In the past, it was that if I could build a lab and I had 12, I think it was 15 or 17 computers in that room, all of it was able. The computers, the wiring, everything was able. So people were building labs right and left. Because, not because it was educationally sound, not because it had any pedagogical, you know, merit to it. They were doing it because they could at least get the equipment and get 80% on the, you know, 80 cents on the dollar and those kinds of things. So we were really doing things that we knew were not educationally sound, but it was the way to do it. And then, of course, you know, two years later, people were breaking up their labs and they disappeared and, you know, the game's played, essentially. And so labs are out there, but they're going by the wayside. Because more and more teachers are becoming more and more comfortable with the technology and they're being able to begin to rise to that level of being a technology specialist. Interesting side note, when I was talking to some of the new hires over at Chancellor, we were talking, we were having this discussion about digital natives and digital immigrants. And I said, I have to ask you the honest question here. I said, you, and they, you know, I said, I'm going to compliment you. You know how to use technology better than probably most of the other ones in this room. And we were having this honest conversation because the other ones were saying, yeah, you know, I'm learning, you know. So, and they said, yeah. I said, but I have another question to ask you. Have you been taught how to use it pedagogically in a classroom with instruction? And they said, no, we have not. So what you have are, is, and again, I don't want to be stereotypical here, but an older staff that may not have the technical expertise, but have the pedagogical skills. And now you've got this, a younger group of teachers coming in who have technical skills, but lack the pedagogy. And so there's strength. And now it's time to team those people together and bring them and pull. And that's where, again, professional development comes into play. Professional development, again, for the next year, we want to go one-to-one in the K5. That every student would have a computer. And so, and again, what I do at the end of this, don't get caught up with the slides. I kind of have a little graph that shows how this all works. Again, curriculum integration, software selection. I keep, I keep putting that in there because I want you to understand that that is first and foremost. Student participation and technology integration, Gen Yes. It's a program that's been around for a number of years. It's a nonprofit organization that really develops, they developed a curriculum, has 28 units to it. Talks and teaches students in how to be digital leaders, how to, for instance, many times, when you have students who are technologically astute, what will happen many times is, I don't know whether you've experienced this, I have with my son. Hey Nate, how do you do this? Oh, you just, and he just doesn't. Wait, 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 wait. I need to know how you did that. You know, and he doesn't have the patience for that. Well, when you're a Gen Yes student, we teach the students, you got to be patient. You got to walk people through, document what you're doing. You know, in a sense, have that bedside manner, so to speak. Because if you're working with adults and you're helping adults, they, they work on a system called the TAP, which is a teacher-assisted project. So I'm a teacher. I have a project. My smartboard is broken, whatever it happens to be. So I tap a student. I tap the system. I tap a Gen Yes, you know, I trigger that. A student comes out and helps me with that. Now it might be that's an error, it's a user error. It might be my problem. And I do have an embarrassing story to tell you. Kindergarten class, Chancellor, for two months, could not get the sound to work on the board. Could not get it to work at all. And I walked in there and she said, did you think about anything? I said, I researched it. I, you know, I don't know. I got to figure, you know. They go in there and I look at it one more time. Little six-year-old boy comes up, tucks on my leg and says, what about the switch underneath there? And sure enough, that's what it was. You know, I mean, I hadn't seen it. It would be a little, you know, it wasn't in my view and I hadn't seen it. And there's so many different models of the smartboard. The switch is everywhere on all the different models. I, right over my hat and here, I look at it and I go, thank you very much. So that happens. But, but what I really like about this Gen Yes program is it really takes the students through the process. In Arizona, for instance, and just to tell you the potential of what can happen with a program like this. It started out as a club. It went to a class where the students received credit, college credit. So, and now, now it went to, I think now they have six classes running of it or something because there's so many. It's a large school district, but, but they've been running it for a number of years. And they've developed it in such a way that the students benefit and community service. They talk about digital citizenship. They talk about helping teachers technologically, but also professional development. One of the things that I was looking for is that we get a new device, whatever it happens to be. Well, now we got to come up with a whole plan to teach this to staff. We get a new type of projector, let's say, for instance. So why not do a YouTube video of that projector? Here's how you use it. We had six, six new staff or so over at Chancellor this year. You know, in dribs and drabs, they're like, well, I need to know how to do this. I need to know how to do that. And it's like, this is not the way to do this. It should be, you came in, here's how you do everything. If you want to know how to do it, it's right here. If you have any questions, come see me. And because they're, again, digital natives, they will pick that up much quicker. They will do it. And it's much more effective for everybody involved. So anyways, I'm really excited to see that Gen Yes program start out. As a matter of fact, I don't want to get to it. I just wanted to... Sorry, I've got glasses. Some of the topics: cyber safety and digital citizenship, online research and information literacy. It's one thing to be, know how to Google something, but if you really want to do real research, that's a skill. It really is. Digital media, web publishing, computer programming and game design, simulation modeling and data, communication skill, media literacy, to be an influence, which is very interesting, I think, the media influence. How, how you can shape the message and how you can be shaped by a message, you know. And we need to make our students very discerning in that regard. It's a very dangerous world out there. Career exploration, hardware, software, researching solutions. And then these are the ones towards the end. Leadership in the 21st century, being a leader, teaching as a leader. Community leaders, community service projects. So those are the kinds of things that they're talking about and how to do that in a digital world. So I'm very excited about that piece. Staffing and support. Both SALT and SAGE report identified the need for additional technical support. And I'm recommending that we hire a what's called a Level 3 technician. That's an industry term. The civil service has a, what's called an infrastructure manager as a job title. I have the title or the job description online right behind this PowerPoint, so we could look at it if you want to. Why am I recommending this? Well, A, they, both SALT and SAGE recommended it. So it's not just me wanting some additional help, but really they see that we are really thin at the support level. On top of that, we are going to add an entirely different parallel network to what we already have. So we're going to basically double our network. One's still the clunky old, you know, one that we're really struggling with. But the other one's going to be this new wireless network. And they run in parallel. And we're also going to build density. We're building capacity within our buildings. Every teacher with a laptop, every student eventually one-to-one at the elementary within the first, within the second year. We want to pull back Bosse's services. I'm not doing that because I don't want to speak despairingly of Bosse's. I do not. They do a wonderful job with what they do. My issue with Bosse's is going to be the speed at which they respond. It's very difficult when we have a network problem here to call up and they say, well, we've got three techs. They're out in Wappingers right now or they're over here. They want to help. They've got the expertise. They are very helpful. But we're sitting here waiting for that to happen. And we need, and particularly when the cell talked about lack of trust and lack of response. They, I think that if we're going to make this investment, we need to make that response. So the teachers are in crisis. We need to answer that crisis immediately and be able to do that as quickly as possible so that we don't have what the cell report talked about, which was, it's another piece of, you know, whatever, and just want to back away. That attitude and that kind of viewpoint costs us millions. It really does. When you think about it, it costs us in the way that we teach kids. I don't even know if you can put it to a dollar amount, but it really is huge. When you think about it, the teachers just abandon and they throw up their hands. And rightfully so in some ways. I'm not, you know, it's not a blame game here, but, but they get frustrated. SALT also said that it was a major step toward the Information Communications and Technology Services Department. If we're going to expand these areas, get into social media, get into these, we're going to need the support to be able to do that. And I will speak to this very briefly, but I need to say it. And that is that you have a technician here, you have one technician here, who, quite frankly, you are very lucky to have. She is phenomenal. And there aren't many people who have the skill set that she has because technical people cannot, sometimes lack of bedside manner. And she has both. She has both the technical skills and the bedside manner. Because I have seen her de-escalate people. I have seen her, calm down, it's not, it's okay, being one of them, you know. And so, you know, she, she has those skills. And that's very important in an educational environment to have that. And so again, I just want you to understand that this technology director appreciates the staff that you have here. Okay, we moved to year two. So we've got, we've got basically a cart, a cart at every grade level in year one. Now we move to, in year two, we move to a one-to-one environment with curriculum integration complete. We've done that in year one. We brought in the carts at every level. We've done the professional development. We've looked at the curriculum. We've started to stage it for stage, for year two, for the one-to-one. At that point, we're ready. Now we've moved in, now we're year two. We bring in additional carts, computers and those kinds of things. But now we're jumping ahead and we're planning now for 612. So the planning always has to be one step ahead of the implementation. So a year ahead of implementation. So I want them to talk to the 68 staff about mobile technology. Give them year two, the mobile technology, so they can start to become accustomed to it, start to do the professional development, start to look at the curriculum and software review. And you're going to see the same thing as we go to year three and year four. You're going to see the same, same bullets as we go through. Year three, again, the same things. Move 912, mobile technology, specific planning. And I'm just going to run through this very quick because again, it's just a repeat. It's just moving ahead. And then year four, we move to one-to-one 912. Year five is infrastructure. And this is where we revisit the servers, security, network upgrades, and ongoing curriculum review. And that's what we have to do. You always, you can't let your infrastructure get to the point where we got it this year. We've got it now 15 years. It just, at this point, you got to build shop and start over with the network. And again, curriculum review. So in year six, we come back to the K2 environment. And now it's been six years since we infused technology there. It's been six years of teaching and learning and changing and modifying what we've done. Now we look at it and say, has technology changed? Well, iPads were the era eight six years ago and now it's going to be something else now. And is that worth making the change? Is it not? Those are the decisions that have to be made. You don't want to, again, get into the same situation that you have now with a bunch of old machines all at once. So what you want to do is create where you're not killing your budget every year by doing these massive infusion of technology. You want to nip at it every year, grade by grade, and create a scenario where it's sustainable. And then you come back and do it again. And it's all embedded in your budget and being able to do that. Now, I'm talking about here, change to an 80/20 strategy. And I'll tell you what that is over the next five years. And it's the next graphic. If you look at these graphics right here, what I'm doing in boxes there is telling you what the first five years would look like. You have a transition year. Then you're going to go one-to-one K5, one-to-one 68, one-to-one 912. going to go one-to-one K5, one-to-one six eight, one-to-one nine twelve, and infrastructure. There's your next five years going out, roughly. Now, none of this is cast in stone, because some things change and those kinds of things, but this is what it is, this is what it should look like. And I'll just put those out here. And that is really what you should do, and I'm recommending this for the, going out ten years now, is to say, you spend about twenty percent on your infrastructure, it might be you're going to replace your phone system, it might be a security system, it might be a network upgrade, it might be whatever, and then eighty percent is really on the educational side. That's the model that you want to finally get to. Right now, I'm recommending the top model, because there's been so much deferred maintenance, that we've got to really infuse and inject a lot of technology in the classroom and shorten up that timeframe, so I'm shortening it and compressing it into four years, with the last year being infrastructure. But you really want it to be the second model, which is a little bit in infrastructure, a lot in the educational side. And that's where you want to get to, so that everything's constantly being refreshed, everything's constantly being looked at and saying, "Okay, we gotta maintain this." For instance, our exchange server is, this if I get this right, two thousand and three, exchange two thousand and three, I think it is, we have to jump up to, we can't jump to thirteen, because Microsoft makes you buy two thousand and ten, which we never used, and then we have to jump to two thousand and thirteen. We're two generations behind, and they're not even going to support it, and they're not going to let, allow us to make the jump from way back here to here. We've got to buy things in between to do that. If you do this kind of a structure, you won't have those problems, you won't, because what's happened is the learning curve and the support of the support staff is huge. It's very different than what it was in two thousand and three. You can let your staff grow with it, you let your support staff grow with it. So that's where you want to get to, isn't it? And I throw out eighty-twenty, it could be seventy-five, twenty-five, it could be ninety, ten, certain years, it depends on the need of the project at that time. But that's really what you want to get to, is you want to get to a model where you're doing a little bit under the hood, and you're doing a little bit on the outside, and you're polishing the color, so to speak, and you're making what people see happen, and what you are doing work in the classroom. So, I just put these last, and this is my last slide, and this is it, but these are kids collaborating. Now, what I found interesting about some of these is, these two, it's all about collaboration, but there is a time, and that's why I put this picture in, where isolation may be appropriate. You know, somebody has a problem with phonics, somebody has a problem with speech, put on, isolate a little bit, I can zone in, I can work on this, AIS services sometimes might be appropriate for this, sometimes it isn't about collaboration. Collaboration's great, I love it, but there are times when students need to be in a zone, they're having a program that will walk them through their particular area of weakness, or if they are, particularly I have a son who's a special needs child, and so I understand what it is to have a tool, be able to sit there and build those skills in phonics and speaking, and all those kinds of things. So, and that's what it's all about, it's all about the kids. So, but I thank you for your time, and if you have some questions about any of this, I know it's like, kind of jumped a little, jumped a lot, we're actually ten years into the future with some of this, but if you do have any specific questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Does anyone have any specific questions? Oh, go ahead. What you described is a big project.
Yes, it is.
So, what I want to know, I understand how tied it is to the CELT report, but what I want to get a sense of is how realistic you think it is that we're going to be able to accomplish, or what it is.
Well, when I looked at it, and I remember you asking the question about whether there was enough money in the budget, there's a temptation for people to go, "Oh, give me as much as I can, and I can just splash it out there." But I have to look at it and say, "What's capacity say to me?" And when I look at being able to do two K1 to two, that's three grades, essentially twelve teachers and plus some other support staff, that's the group I put under my wing my first year. Twelve teachers I can do, I can really in-service that group of twelve, and next year I've got another group of twelve, and next year I've got another group. And it's really, I've always, I've always talked to my staff about doing, doing fewer things well, you know, now, yeah, it is a big project, but we're going over five years, and we're talking about twelve teachers a year, essentially, that we're really trying to in-service. While we're still doing general in-service and prepping, you know, for the grades coming up ahead, so, but my, you have to be intense with those twelve, and the grade against those, you have to really, because if they learn bad habits right away, you've got a big problem, you know, and so you've got to, you've got to get in there right away and say, "Make sure you're doing this right," and they have to see the benefit of it. Today, we had a K teacher and a first grade teacher who expressed some interest, well, one expressed concern, the other expressed interest in technology at their levels. And so, I arranged a visit, so Brett King and myself and these two teachers spent the morning in Wappingers, where they were integrating iPads in the classroom. They need to see it, they need to see best practices, and they need to be able to do that. And it was very important for me to choose those teachers, because that's, those are the grade levels I'm going to be looking at going out of the gate. And I'm sure that as we go down the road, we'll get better at what we do, as far as in-serving that staff, being able to do that, but if you don't have that in-service piece, anybody can buy it, anybody can cut a check, you know, and so it's really about making sure that you have built the capacity with your staff to be able to do that.
Well, and that's the, that's the part that I'm really the most interested in purposes of this discussion, because, you know, I, speaking only for myself, I have only really a glancing understanding of the substance, and I'm sure that I'm not the only person in the school district who is in that position. And what you said during your presentation about people lacking trust and being fearful of new things, I may not have said that directly.
No, no, yeah, I agree with that.
I'm wondering if maybe this might be even a little overly ambitious, you know, if it will take, if you'll be able to integrate all of what you're hoping for in the three grades in one year.
Right. My, part of that difficulty, or part of the hurdle that you have to look at in that regard is the current attitude, and like you say, there's a lack of trust. However, one of the things, and it is to the compliment of the staff here, is that they're hungry. They, you know, I went into the classes, and I would say, in the entire elementary school, I think one individual was resistant to the idea of technology, one. And I thought, "Well, that's not bad." I mean, I've been in years where it's fifty percent, and you know, and it's like, "Wow, this is going to be a big lift to try to change that." But in talking with them, they're like, "Yeah, we want to do this, we know what it can do," because they see it with their kids, they see it in their own lives, they know, they're becoming much more aware of the potential of it, and they want to become part of that, you know, and so that attitude has changed quite a bit. I think one of the things that I struggle with is, is there's always a fine line between how much support you give somebody. If I, for instance, held your hand every step of the way, I'm not helping you, you know, I have to be able to say, "Here it is, I'm helping you," but at some point, I've got to push you out of the nest, so to speak, you know, I want to say it that way, because you have to be able to do it and learn and be, because if you're dependent on in-service the rest of your career, that's not effective. And you know that, you see the one, the teachers that are really the ones that really get it, are the ones that are self-motivated, they just, we've got to instill that, because we don't have enough money, there isn't enough support in any school district to carry somebody for thirty years, you just don't have it. So you have to look at the approach of it and say, and fortunately, in Rhinebeck, we have people here that are saying, "Yeah, let's do this, let's go." And it's really encouraging to hear people say, "I'm really glad that things are moving, you know, we've been talking about it, we've been talking about it." Yeah, there's a little bit of that honeymoon period and all those kinds of things, and I recognize that, but I think that there's also a point where you can really make some real headway during that time and say, "Hey, I'm going to support you on this, and I'm going to walk you through it, and if you have a question," that's why we need the support there, to say, "Hey, we got to do this."
Laurie. Well, I want to thank you for actually bringing this all into focus. The CELT audit was great, but it was, you know, a lot of...
It was a lot, yeah.
So this is really incredible, I love a plan. But with the plan, you know, as Lisa alluded to, comes a lot of dollar signs, and I want to make sure that you feel comfortable that your year one is covered by this document, considering the wireless RFP and the infrastructure needs and all of that.
Yeah, it is, one of the things that Tom and I have talked about is, what kind of a program do we implement with doing this? And many, many districts, and it's my recommendation, that we go to a leasing program. Now, obviously, that means that money carries out, but it's something that you already know in the budget going forward, but that's how you have to build capacity, so, don't hold me to these numbers, but just as an example, let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars of actual cash that we would use, well, that might buy you four hundred or four hundred thousand dollars worth, depending on what, three or four-year lease, whatever it is, but you're going to get a massive amount. Then the next year, I would come back to this board and say, "If you want to build this, you've got to build in your budget another hundred thousand," and then after that, and then five years, so maybe at the end of five years, yeah, you've got a half million, but it's there, it's a continual cost, it's embedded there, and now you don't have to go, "Oh, man, we've got an entire, you know, we've got an entire network that's junk, and we have to do something about that, and we got to rip and tear, and we're starting at ground zero." You won't have that, it's embedded, and the costs are reoccurring. But, and that's really the structure that you want to have, is to be able to say, "Okay, we know going forward that that's going to catch all the gotchas," you know, that we're going, because we know that we have that a structure, especially if you get to that eighty-twenty scenario, where you've got all the bases covered, not really trying to infuse, you know, the educational piece and really try to infuse the network piece, but you have a balance of both, and it's carried into that. So, yeah, I'm comfortable with what we've got. Matter of fact, you know, I mean, you could, I could say, "You know I want it all," but again, we get back to the capacity issue. So, it's a chicken and egg kind of, kind of a scenario, and you want to make sure that if you're going to do it, you do it right, so, yeah, I am comfortable with it, but thank you.
I just want to say how appreciative I am of the kind of long-term thinking that you've shared with us about building capacity, about sustainability, about working year to year to really make this change resonate throughout the curriculum. It's extremely thoughtful, and I think helpful for us to hear you map it out in this, in this particular way. And I just have one question about, you talked about equity for faculty access, but also student access, and I was wondering if you could speak to any thoughts you might have about people who might not have in their homes access to cutting-edge, you know, latest model of any of this equipment, or even the equipment at all. I don't, you know, we, I don't think, we often assume everyone has a smartphone, everyone has a laptop, everyone has this, that, and the other, but perhaps that might be a mistake to assume that.
I think it is, no matter how affluent the district may be, or whatever, you still have those issues, and they may be issues that are temporary in a home, those kinds of things. One of the things that the Gen Yes program, for instance, as an example, they will put and build computers, you know, take donated computers and those kinds of things, and put them together, so what's to say you don't do that, and what's to say you don't allow a cellular device and make that computer that way if there's not Wi-Fi at the home?
Right.
Obviously, you have to be careful, because there's all, you've got to want to make sure you don't provide a student with a technology to go do inappropriate things, you know, so you have to put filters and some locks on those things, you've got to do your due diligence. I mean, the law basically says, you know that you can't guarantee it, but we have to know whether you've done your due diligence. So, so there are ways of getting around that, a lot of districts that use, for instance, iPads, there's one model, the iPad, that has a CELT capability, so those are given out to those who have the need.
Okay.
You know, you don't need to give that to somebody who has Wi-Fi almost everywhere they go, because it's an expense in the district. So if you pull back, you know, ten percent, seven percent, five percent, whatever percentage you need, and say, "Those number of devices are going to have that capability," or "We have those cards for the laptop situation, and we'll use those on an as-need basis," because many times, those situations are very temporary. I used to work quite a bit with homeless students who had come from, you know, four hundred thousand dollar homes, and all of a sudden, some circumstances happened, and they don't have anything, and it's quite a shock for them, obviously emotionally, and you've got to work, work through that, and you provide them something, and then they turn around and they give it back, but then they've gotten, they've recovered and they've bounced back, and they've gotten another situation that caused that resolved, and to do that. So, there are ways around it, and they're not expensive, you know, even if you say, "Well, yeah, these are donated," but it's something that you can use and be able to do that, you just have to make sure that you're keeping everybody safe with that.
I still want to thank you for coming, it's been a great presentation, I particularly appreciate your philosophy on technology and education. And I really like that you're taking the time to meet with the staff and to hear their needs, and, you know, for them to get to know you, I think that that's important and that's great. I'm wondering, as we move forward, and you're talking about the one-on-one, and, you know, kids will be working on maybe laptops in the classroom, like, how will that work with homework, going to the home, and they won't be taking them home like you're talking about with the teachers, so, you know.
That's right. Well, some schools have begun to do, I don't think we're there yet, but more and more districts are allowing that stuff to go home, but they have, that involves a lot of protocols in place, a lot of policies, some districts will say, "Yes, we'll send them home," but you have to carry an insurance policy, a replacement insurance policy. So, if you want Johnny to have that computer to come home, yeah, you've got to pay this. Some districts, and these are just various models, some districts will say, "Here's your computer," and you pay a fee, like an activities fee, you know, some districts have gone to that model, where literally the student owns at the end. I know of several school districts where a freshman is issued a brand-new laptop, and when they walk across the stage and grab their diploma, they take their laptop with them and they're off to college, because, you know, they have a recycle, because basically the district has decided that every four years, our policy is we replace, so we surplus all that, and they walk away with it, or they buy it, you know, there are multiple variations of how to do that. But the flip classroom, that was, it's a very neat concept for people to understand. Basically, for those of you who may not have heard the term, it basically is where the presentation of the information is done at home. Go home and watch, I'll just use this as an example, go home and watch this YouTube video on the French Revolution, or whatever it happens to be. Homework is then done in class, and so they've gotten the information while they're at home, that is their homework, homework is to watch the video. When they come to class, here are the questions, here's the concepts, let's talk about it. What that does is allows the teacher to walk around and say, "Is Steve getting this?" You know, "Is Joe getting this?" And you talk about differentiated instruction, that's differentiated instruction, because now the teacher is not at the front, he or she is walking around among the students and saying, "Are you getting this, are you understanding this, do you understand what happened when Nina Sixteenth did this, or, you know, Maria Angelina did that?" And those are the kinds of things, and that's a flip, flip classroom. Some schools, you know, some students say, "Well, I've got the resources at home, I have a computer at home, I don't need the, my device to come home," and they can still flip the classroom, it varies. But it's a model that some districts have gone to, but it's slow in coming because of the risk, and people, you know, can feel like you have a responsibility to it, especially when it comes to like iPads and things like that. We, in the previous school district I worked in, when we launched nine hundred iPads, we didn't allow them to go home in that district, simply because we were afraid that they wouldn't come back. But however, we were also afraid that they would damage them, and they didn't, the ones who damaged them were the adults. We had, out of the nine hundred iPads, ten of them have come back damaged by adults, two have come back damaged by students, you know, and it's just difficult, it's not, you know, but it's kind of humorous, because you have, you expect the worst, and it's like, no, they rise to the occasion. And the other, the other study that's out there is how students treat equipment when it's theirs versus when it's not. How do I treat this book better if I paid for it, or this iPad or this computer if I own it? And there are studies out there talking about whether the care of the equipment is with, if it's theirs. If I'm a freshman, I get it, I issue, and I know that I get to walk across the stage with it in four years, how do I take care of it versus, you know, it's a school district, so I'm not going to see this next year, you know, whatever. It's very interesting on how the behavior of students are with equipment and stuff, it's just interesting. But to be, to be honest with you, there aren't a lot of schools out there doing the take it home, like, it's rare that it happens.
Any other questions?
Well, Steve, thanks so much for being here. You know, I've been in the room a long time, and we've had conversations about technology for a long time, so while this is sort of a beginning with this plan, which is really comprehensive and so well-thought-out, I also see it as sort of, you know, culmination of a lot of conversations over many years, and really, it's just wonderful to have you a part of the district, bringing together a lot of things that we have wanted to do for so many years, and grappling... a lot of things that we have wanted to do for so many years and grappling with issues that are about, you know, hardware and software and curriculum and ideas and children and people's, the capacity, people's comfort level and getting the students involved and you meeting the students is just really fantastic. So, you know, you just have brought together so many things so comprehensively and really sensitively to the culture of this school. So, you know, there's a lot of work to do and it's very ambitious. And, you know, as we talk about the budget and our next item and in additional years, there'll be continue to be a lot of challenges, but, you know, we're just really grateful that you're here presenting us with something that's just really exciting. It's a great place to be at this point.
It can happen and I appreciate your support. And I will say that it's been, since I've been here, it's been a great four months so far. I mean, the staff has been wonderful, the teachers, the personnel staff, everybody has been, it's been a great experience, I'll just say it that, leave it at that, but it's been wonderful to see that. So, thank you.
It's very exciting.
It's great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before Steve leaves, I mean, I do want to get him on the road, but if there, well, he's not exactly going around a block either. But before he leaves, I want to make sure that if there are any questions that relate to the budget discussion, we make sure we ask those questions while he's here as opposed to after he's halfway to Troy, so.
All right. Just a quick question. So, the Technology Club Advisor, is that for the Gen Yes?
Yes.
Curriculum and program? Okay, excellent.
Yes, that is.
Okay. Good. So, no other questions? This is for Steve?
I don't think this is for Steve, but it has to do with the Science Lab and our plan for that.
STEM Lab? STEM Lab at the field of STEM?
The STEM Lab, yeah. But I'm not sure whether that has anything to do with.
Well, why don't you roll it out?
Okay. So, as you guys know, I asked the question earlier about our enrollment numbers in AIS Math. And Brett thankfully was able to put these numbers together. Up until December, we've only had a .5 AIS Math person for years. And it looks as though our enrollment there, you know, give or take a couple of kids, year by year, hasn't really changed dramatically. So, we added enough capacity for a 1.5 AIS Math person going forward. And because of Steve's plan and being able to have a technology manager, it meant that the CLS STEM Lab full-time position was going to have to remain at .5 position. So, my question really is, are we providing a 1.5 AIS Math person for 60 kids a year rather than providing a 1.0 for 400 kids who are going to take science and 1.0 AIS for 60 kids who are going to take science? I just want to make sure that we're dividing the money equitably so that Brett and Marvin, who spoke so positively about the launch program, can get what they're looking for as well. And the fact that the launch program has a math component to it, a pretty strong, common core aligned math component. So, there's going to be some support built into the math element here as well. It seems like a missed opportunity if we have to wait another year for a full-blown science.
Yeah. Well, I usually don't like to speak for other people, but in this case I will because they're not here to speak for themselves. And I'm not sure, and Steve can certainly feel welcome to chime in if he, you know, if he'd like to have a good conversation. But we've been talking about this with Brett and Marvin and Steve for months and months and months, ever since Steve got here and before Steve got here with Marvin and Brett. I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say that both Marvin and Brett's top priority in that building is to have AIS Math support that is even anywhere close to the level of ELA support. If you look at the amount of FTEs that we've had dedicated to ELA and until just earlier this year, only a .5 FTE math AIS teacher, they were emphatic even before Steve Jensen walked down the hallway that math was a priority. And that's why we hired a 1.0 FTE AIS Math teacher earlier this year so we would even start to approach the resources that we have in ELA. The other piece of it, and I'm, you know, I'm giving you the quick and dirty here, not the hour and a half presentation, because I didn't come prepared to do that, but the other aspect that I've talked with Marvin and Steve and Brett with, especially since they returned from the visit up to Saratoga, is that they realize that implementing a brand-new program like the Project Lead the Way program is not going to happen overnight. It didn't happen overnight in the middle school. It's not going to happen overnight at our elementary school. And their feeling is that they're comfortable with starting that program this coming year with a .5 FTE, well, .5 FTE of that person's responsibilities dedicated to the STEM Lab and the STEM curriculum with the idea of assessing how that goes in year one and then making an assessment towards the latter part of last year, of latter part of next year as to whether they feel at that point that we need a full-time STEM teacher or not or another year down the road or whatever, that they want the opportunity to assess that. So, I think in terms of meeting the needs that they've identified in that building, that the plan that we've brought to you is where they want to see it. I don't believe either Marvin or Brett would feel comfortable having less math AIS support in lieu of more STEM support at least this coming year.
Okay.
Would you concur with that or?
I agree with you there, Stephen.
All right. So, this can segue then into our review of the budget.
Yeah.
If there are any questions for Steve.
Yeah, I don't want to keep them just because I want to see.
Steve's gone, so, you know, feel free.
I think, you know, the only other question that might come up, I think Steve did a great job of addressing it during his presentation, but again, I want to make sure that if there are any questions regarding that Level 3 technician and additional support, ask it please, if you would, before he heads out to his car so we can address that. And I think you did a pretty good job of addressing it, but there may be questions still regarding that.
I can't pass up an invitation.
She's going to ask.
What do you envision that person actually doing?
Primarily to start out is, again, I'll give Joe the job description itself and you can see it listed out specifically, but there are some areas to go. The Wi-Fi is one of the big areas of doing that piece of it. The other is a desire for my part to bring our email system back into our fold rather than being, that goes, much more control over that. The other major area is the security backup and what is needed to make our servers and writing. We have to have somebody who has a certain skill that will be able to write scripts for going into active directory and pulling out the student data, being able to populate. What we're finding is that we have things like Blockster and some other things out there and we're hand-entering this stuff in all the time. I've got 60 kids that I need to sign for my class. Quite frankly, paying me to do that is not the way to do it. You need to write a script that exports those kids. Mr. Johnson's class needs all these kids that are already identified in the student information system or active directory. Comes out, well, there's scripts that you write to do that and it's very secure. You don't, you know, it doesn't cause anything because it's just exporting, it's not adding anything to any information system. Takes a little bit of finesse to do that, takes a programmer's skill to do that. When it comes to security and backup, we came across a situation many years ago and our internet was being provided by RPI across the street from Troy High School. Literally a fiber optic cable going through Bray Hall, which was their dorm room, they had it. Couple of very good hackers, if I use a better term, were using our servers to store all kinds of inappropriate material. We found that out through the fact that we had a Level 3 technician there. That's another way, you know, and he came and he actually used the example of how he got hacked, how his system got hacked and actually presented that at shows and technology, you know, proof to talk about, to warn other districts, this is a vulnerability, this is a thing you can't. But we need to be able to do that because, to be honest with you, a Level 1 or Level 2 technician wouldn't even know that you could be hacked. Wouldn't even, wouldn't even be aware of it. And a Level 3 would because of the security. So, it's really email security, wireless, making work for servers and networking. Those are the areas that jump out of the, again, I'll provide you the whole job description as it's laid out because we have to, we can't necessarily create a job ourselves. We can, it's very arduous process that has a little service because the test has to give and, you know, the whole routine. So, fortunately, this October, a district in Dutchess County wanted that kind of level of support, wanted that kind of person. And so, they were, they went through all the, they jumped through all the hoops. So, we're kind of catching on the coattails and then saying, yeah, that's what we want for us as well.
And that person would report to you?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll just weigh in on that because, you know, we're talking about bringing in wireless and new servers and all those things. Those are very highly technical pieces of equipment and you really need somebody that has an expertise, I feel, in-house because if there is a problem, you want it to be solved, you know, relatively quickly, not, you know, why you have to wait for somebody from Bosse's to come and look at it. It's very important that we get on it right away and I think it's really beneficial to have someone in-house.
So, that may help answer my question, which is, you know, you've demonstrated that these audits have shown that we have, you know, a very outdated network. And so, that certainly the need exists for both your expertise in curriculum development, we want professional development, and also someone to, a technician to work on helping us maintain, you know, do and maintain upgrades. But is that positioned something that then you would anticipate even when we're, say, in five years? I mean, I know we can't anticipate, but just is the, is the model out there that you need someone on staff all the time for these kinds of things? Or is it really a reaction in large part right now to the fact that we have such clunky, as you said, networks?
The model that I, this is the model that I put in 15 years ago in Troy's district and that model still is in play. I can't really say what it is out there. I don't want to say quite enough, but I don't, I can certainly check that out, but I can tell you that my, my optic view, that model still is out there. And I'm actually, I'm not surprised that other districts are beginning to advertise for that kind of level of support. Security is a big issue, you know, and Mark speaks to it very well, that there's a massive, you know, we have wireless devices and everybody, I mean, my cell phone now is going to be part of that system. So, you've got all these BYOB devices and it has to be managed. That's a constant, even over the years. And one of the things that we also, this will also allow is that, again, I spoke very highly of the technical support that you have now in the district, but she's expressed, you know, a desire to be, for additional training. That has not been, not allowed, but I mean, she, her workload was so heavy, she couldn't do those things. And yet, you know, so now we want to be able to build that capacity as well at the same time and to have a second person there, you couldn't take her off the line, so to speak, because everything, you know, I mean, you, I was one suffering individual when she was gone for two weeks on a public vacation. I was hurting because there were so many problems coming up that I, you know, I had to drive and so. And she tried to leave it as, you know, the table sat for me, that's too good. And, but it really, you have to build within your system those, that capacity for growth out and you break her back, but also bring support to happen.
Yes. And I think you really, I really appreciate the point you've made about that people won't use systems if they're not, if they can't trust them. I mean, it is a complete waste of time and of course, we all have had those personal experiences in a variety of venues, you know, where you're at home trying to do something and you're just, now these guys have X number of minutes a day with kids, you're going to put it aside. So, I think the case you've made that maintaining our infrastructure supports truly the curriculum is really well taken, so.
Well, we're, you know, as a result of the CELT audit and the desires of the board to get serious about technology, we're getting serious about technology and there's a lot of work that's going to be happening that not only needs to be gotten up to speed this summer, but that needs to be, is troubleshooted a word? Troubleshock? I'll be troubleshocked. Needs to be troubleshooted during that initial phase-in and then that needs to be maintained beyond that and it, you know, well, it certainly is an expense. I guess, we brought somebody in here to tell us how to do it right and that's what we're hearing. So, I'm, my tendency at this point in time is to do it right the first time and I think that's part of that plan and I, you know, I think Steve's brought a lot of, you know, there's nothing flamboyant there, but it's nuts and bolts kind of stuff you got to do if you want this thing to work and if you want people to trust it.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Again, for Steve. Do we, do I dare ask that again? Go. Run.
Run away, run away.
Okay. If not, then thank you so much. Drive. And we'll move on now more formally to the review of the budget and development. There's certainly other issues there, questions. We did have a hearing though, earlier, Joe presented the newest information about the tax levy cap and the budget. So, Joe, I don't know that you have anything more specific to say or if there are additional questions. I will just highlight again that, you know, we have on our agenda to adopt a resolution for a certain amount of money for the budget for next year. I don't see any reason at this moment to delay that vote, although we don't have to, we haven't, could we? But that being said, if there are additional questions about this position or, you know, further clarifications, it's, we can vote on the amount of money and you can continue to have questions that could be answered next time if this pops up, you know.
And I think at the risk of oversimplifying it, we're just under the tax levy limit and that was one of the charges that the board had for us at the beginning of the process was do as much as you can do and stay under that limit so we don't have to risk going out for 60% supermajority, which in an age of rebate checks coming at you in early November is suicide to, I think, for a school district to go out for a supermajority. Who's going to say, you know what, don't give me my rebate check, we'll vote for a budget that's higher than that? Because I think it's going to make it very difficult. That was never our goal and I think we've done some pretty good stuff and stayed within that tax levy limit. My only question is, are there things that you want us to cut out so our tax levy is lower than where it is now?
Well, for me, the lesson I learned through this process is that there's no particularly pressing purpose to be served by lowering the tax levy a little bit. It's not It's not, we don't get to use it next year, as we learn.
That's right.
And, you know, with this concept of rebates floating out there, I'm not sure that any insignificant reduction would matter much to the taxpayers. And I don't see any ability to make a significant reduction, you know, without cutting out something that we really want to do.
Yeah, I think that's well, that's well said, yeah. And people feel comfortable with the fund balance usage. Joe explained that, it's just another piece of that. I think the finance committee, that'll come up a little bit in the board meeting reports, but we discussed that as well, the proven use of fund balance. So if there are no other questions right now on the budget, and I just want to be sure everyone feels prepared to vote on it when we get to our actual ideas.
I had a question that's budget, but it's in the finance. Ask it now. The repurposing of the football money. That would spread that money out to the three sports that are funding themselves. Will that be just for next year, or is that gonna, that will be?
Well, it's, it's, it's in the budget. I mean, we didn't, we didn't take it out of the, the budget, because we're kind of waiting to see what was going to happen, and as the, as the weeks drag on, it seems pretty obvious that there are no viable options for us with football for, for the coming year. So if we use it to defray some, some of the expenses of those sports that, that are currently fundraising to make up the, the difference between what we currently fund and the, and the balance of the, of the cost. And I, you know, I think we, one thing we discussed at the finance committee was that perhaps a prudent approach to that would be to, to do the best we, we could to address the costs of, of coaches and transportation for those sports. Whether we're able to do more than that would remain to be seen. Whether there is even more than that, for some sports, that's really the bulk, if not the entirety, of the cost is the coaching stipend and the, you know, and the transportation piece, but we're not, we're not giving, you know, last year, we agreed to earmark $5,000 towards each of those, those sports. We're not, we're not inclined to say, yes, each sport gets, you know, we'll divide that football money up and give each sport X thousands of dollars. We'll, we'll use that from our athletic budget to defray as much of those expenses. It may or may not take care of the entire cost. For some, it's, it's closer, and for other sports, we'll never pay the entire cost. I mean, I don't think in my, in my career, in my lifetime, will we be, say, supporting crew to the tune of $40,000 a year. A sport like lacrosse, because the travel is limited and primarily because of the transportation, we probably would be able to cover their, their costs. Swimming's a little different, because they've got transportation back and forth to a pool for practice every day. So now that transportation cost is a higher expenditure than for some other sports. So I think there's, there's a reasonable amount of money to, to address most, if not all, the needs of those, of those, those other sports. And it's in the budget, so if you don't take it out of the budget the following year, it'll be in the budget. It'll be in the budget for as long as you're leaving in there.
And if, you know, not to pick on swimming, but if, you know, swimming weren't to happen for the girls in the fall, you know, it's a small group, would that money then go back to lacrosse and crew?
No. It would stay in our budget, and then ultimately, if it wasn't spent, it'd go to fund balance. But I think that's the point, is our, and correct me if I'm wrong, but our discussion at the finance committee was not to give each of those sports a pot of money. We'll take care of those coaching and transportation expenditures out of that money that we won't be spending for, for football. And we're thinking that it'll put a good dent in, in most of the, if not all of those coaching and transportation costs.
That being said, and this relates to finance committee, you know, I think in fairness, we, we had that conversation, and, you know, you said you were, Tom, we're going to discuss it further with Steve, look at the budget more carefully. For our purposes, without micromanaging, sort of exactly where those things are going, the concept is to take $15,000 that would have been spent on football, it's in our budget, and use it to help defray costs for those new sports, knowing also that those sports have always known that they were approved, knowing that they were going to be also having to support some. So whatever plan Steve and Tom and Joe come up with hasn't exactly been finalized, but they were reflective in the minutes to say just what Joe said. Not just a pot of money, but another way to look at it is, what are we paying for?
And I think that's fair. What I, I do become concerned with is sometimes that, that amount of money needs to be communicated back to those particular teams, so they know how much they need to risk for.
Yeah.
So if we could make sure.
I think that's a very good point, and what we'll, what we'll do, again, first things first, of course, but, you know, once we get a budget, and then we get a budget that passes, and we, we know what we're working with, then we can, we can do those calculations, see what the difference is, if any, and maybe for some of those groups, there won't be a fundraising need, and maybe for others, there will be. And again, I'm not going to, not picking on them, but crew, because their expense is so high, they're always going to have to fundraise something, because the, the cost of that, of that sport is just beyond anything that, that I see in the, in the reasonable future of ever covering the whole amount. But, yeah, we'll, we'll let them know kind of where they're at, and, you know, if they want to raise money for their own reasons, then that's up to them, but to, to raise money, because if they don't raise X amount of dollars, then that sport can't happen. We would want to let them know where they're at in terms of the budget. But I think when we get a little further into this process, Tom and Steve will be able to parse that. It's, it would seem like repurposing the football money would provide a reasonable amount of, of financial support for those, for those sports.
I'm sure they'll appreciate it.
I'm sure they will.
Any other questions, then, about budgets?
This is not so much about this year's budget, but we mentioned a few minutes ago about the, the fact that the governor's budget, or the state budget that's been passed allows for rebate checks. And so there's really no benefit to being, you know, farther below the tax cap than we are, or, you know, it doesn't seem to matter much at this point. But prior to the state budget passing, there was a proposal that was very complicated about, you know, cost-saving measures, collaboration among districts to try to lower the tax levy so that next year, there will be some benefit to it. So I'm just wondering if, maybe, Tom, if you have an idea of what the state budget actually allows for, for next year?
Well, we haven't gotten fully into that yet. We wait until we get together as an entire, in fact, we're meeting on Friday with all the other business officials, where we discuss it together, so everybody's on the same page. Because how I may read it may be different than Bruce reads it, or Michelle reads it. So we like to sit down together to talk about those things. I mean, we do know some things that have changed, and, you know, there's no more, you know, about the biggest school district in your, in your BOSI's area is going to be the lead on it.
That's, that's gone.
That's gone. It's more on an individual school district basis, collaborating with some type of municipality to lower our costs. I think it was 1%. I mean, I think they're still looking to reduce fine savings of 1%. I think I have a way of doing it, which we can go on finance and be able to talk about ways to save that 1%, and how we may collaborate with somebody's a good question about that. But it's, I don't have enough information to be able to report to you on that.
They haven't provided us with, with any specific guidance on that, except that it is, seems to have gotten a little less complicated than the original plan, but there is still a requirement for, if you want the rebate check for the second year, there's a requirement for finding savings through collaborations, et cetera, to reduce your spending or your tax levy, or whatever. Happens to be by 1%, and without a lot of the bells and whistles that were in the original proposal. But I have not seen one shred of, of an outline of, hey, this is what you do, so we're still waiting on that.
And it doesn't appear that we're tied into whole county, like the last time. We were tied to whole county doing it, but it just seems to be us.
Okay.
Which.
Individual districts.
Individual districts, as opposed to an entire, all school districts within the BOSI's region.
Diane? No, I mean, I think it's always important to try to keep the tax levy as low as possible and balance that with adding programs. And I think that, you know, we've done that, but it's also important to note that it is less than it was last year.
Right.
So for people to realize that, that it is less. And if that rebate's happened, then much less.
Right.
I mean, the tax levy limit is significantly lower this year.
Yep.
I mean, for 1415 than it was for 1314, by almost a percent.
Oh, yeah.
So we're under the limit this year. That means our, our spending and our taxing is, is a lot lower. So, I mean, it's, it's going, you know, from the, from the point of view of a taxpayer, it's, it's going in, in the right direction, and even though we know that the, the tax levy limit's going to fluctuate depending on how we plug into all of those, you know, two, three pages of bizarre formula, but we know that this year's tax levy is less than, than next, and we're below that. So I think, I think we're in a reasonably good place.
And I want to thank you, Joe and Tom, for the work you have done to get us to this point, because every year it's a challenge, you know, rules change, midstream, you know, as we all know, we start the process. It's been very helpful to start the process earlier from a board member's perspective. There are many unknowns when you start that process, and, you know, just you keep us really apprised throughout the whole process of each of the moving parts, and make adjustments accordingly, based on the information that comes in. And, you know, once again, we find ourselves with a budget that I think we're all comfortable with, and a number that I think our taxpayers can support. So I appreciate the work you've put into the past few months.
Sure.
We'll move on then to the 2014-15 BOSI's administrative budget and BOSI's board members.
That shouldn't take us too long, just to remind you again that, that that vote is at our next meeting, April 22nd, which is our regular, our regular meeting, so we don't need an extra meeting. And for anybody who is interested, the BOSI's annual meeting is tomorrow night at 7:00 PM down at the BOSI's Center in Salt Point, or you can go to Mill Road Elementary School up in Red Hook and, and watch a, a broadcast of that annual meeting. There are, there will be two, three candidates running for two board seats. They're in the document that's in your, in your packet. I'm not sure if any of you have received any outreach from any of them. Some years they do, some years they don't.
And I had said at the last meeting, I would try to find out, I will have, I haven't had a chance to, so I'll see if I can find out something. Email these gentlemen directly.
Yeah, two, two of them, Tom Hurley and Mike Reel, are currently sitting board members on the BOSI's Board, and Robert Rubin is not. I don't know anything about, about him, but sometimes they do, do some outreach without being asked before the, the BOSI's budget vote. And in terms of the, the BOSI's budget, there's, there's a, there's a dollar figure in your, in your packets, but as, as I read it, and if you're really, really interested, tomorrow night's the night to slake your thirst at the, at the BOSI's well. But we will be voting on a BOSI's administrative budget. It's not the entire budget by law, just the administrative portion, just a portion of the administrative portion by law needs to be voted on, and it will be $4,233,350, which is a 2.6% increase over, over the current year, just so you know kind of where their costs are running relative to, and I don't think they have a tax levy cap that they have to worry about. But they're, you know, it's, it's not, doesn't seem to be wild and crazy spending, but, and you should all have gotten a copy of this. Have you not gotten this yet?
Maybe just to share it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They're cutting back on their costs, too.
Yeah, yeah. They'd be doing like, they'd be doing like a steak, they'd be saying, you photocopied this. All right, we'll have to see if we can get a few of those. So really, that's it on the BOSI's votes, two weeks from tonight.
Do we ever not vote for the budget?
You mean, do you not vote, or do you vote no?
Has this district ever voted no on the BOSI's?
It's a darn good question.
I feel like there might have been one.
We kind of flirted with it, one year.
And I guess I can't remember whether we did. I know that, you know, I would say the issues that have come up in the past have been communication issues, and, you know, I mean, you know, it's a tough one. I will say, you know, these people are serving, most of them on other boards, so it's a lot of work, and as far as providing, you know, the question really is, are they providing us with the services that we want? And it's been my understanding that we've been satisfied with the services they provide, so.
And we send quite a few of our kids there.
There was one year where we thought of, I think, because of some issues, we were, but I can't remember whether we did or didn't.
I'm, my, yeah.
I honestly thought.
The memory is there, but my sense is that we've always voted for it. I don't really think we ever voted it down, but we, we did make some, we did squawk a bit that year.
Squawked a couple of years.
I think we, we voted yes, but registered our displeasure. It was all about communication on their part, you know, not, not seeming to be interested in, in, in outreach to us, and I remember at one point, there were kind of, the, the numbers weren't really quite as transparent as you might want them to be. I mean, they were there, they were what they were, and they were, not saying there was anything illegal, but like, when you have to search a booklet to find out what you're voting on, that's like, not the most transparent way to deal with. There's only 13 component districts, I mean, it's not like every person in the county is casting a single ballot for them. So I think there were some of those concerns that, that got our backs up, but we have, I believe, we've always voted yes.
And this year, there's nothing?
I, no, it's pretty much business as usual.
Okay. If a BOSI's budget doesn't pass, what does that do to our numbers? I mean, they'd, they'd have to cut.
It doesn't, it freezes theirs, does it not?
It freezes.
Their administrative budget. But it's most of, most of what we're paying, like, for example, if we're paying, I'll just pull a number out of thin air, you would know the number. We're paying $200,000 to send our kids to the tech center, and the BOSI's budget doesn't pass, we're still paying $200,000 to send our kids to the tech center. It's the administrative budget that gets frozen, and that, there is an impact, but it's not like, oh, wow, they're going to jack the cost up on our, on our students going to the BOSI's center. That, that's not going to happen. That doesn't happen. I have no reason not to recommend that you, that you vote the BOSI's budget.
I mean, I would say, you know, I I mean, I would say, you know, as, as this sort of communication issue or whatnot, if the, if this board ever wanted to sort of pursue it more, I think we should begin sort of in September and dialogue with Tom and, you know, Howie and maybe Richard Zip about, you know, what are the services at Bozies, where we feel like we need service improvements, you know, put our heads together to really think what we want from them rather than make just a sort of statement because maybe we want more communication. You know, I've always said, we should be more proactive if we want to. And that's something we may want to consider since we have already a bunch of students who go down there, but look into it more carefully before voting against it. So. Okay, and I'll see what kind of information I can come up with. We move on now to board committee reports. We had curriculum and finance, dear G to the curriculum.
Yes, so at our last meeting, we followed up on questions that have been introduced both in our informal coffee hour and also here at, during public comment at the last board meeting. And Marvin Krebs was extremely helpful in answering some of the questions that came out during question period. First of all, we were given really quite a comprehensive overview of the district's approach to teaching reading in the elementary school. Some questions had been raised about that approach. And Marvin tried to frame the current curriculum design in relation to the building of the curriculum overall, since his arrival in the district around the year 2000. He spoke to the now well-established Ossies reading program as well as the foundations program, which supplements it. And he then went on to talking about how curriculum writing is taking place this year, obviously at a rather feverish pace, with the help of our literacy specialist that's been engaging pretty much all of her energies this year. And that he is confident that the reading program is very much in sync with Common Core standards. That being said, he said he couldn't speak to the question of what he called fidelity to standards in individual classrooms. That's really not his position in a sense to monitor that. And the committee will be continuing this discussion with Brett King, who's going to come and meet with us and continue to enlighten us on how literacy instruction is approached across the kindergarten in particular, but in the elementary school more generally. We spoke then, kind of in an ongoing way, about the desirability of the differentiated learning environment, in particular in our elementary school classrooms, but across the district. Marvin shared with us some of the literature on that, how teachers sort of take on board those skills in their classroom practices. And he also alluded to the recent experiences with Rick Campbell, working with large groups of, of teachers, how productive that had been, and he sort of saw that as a, a nice model for thinking about the ongoing development of teachers who are practicing differentiated instruction. He also pointed to the fact that all of our evaluations are now keyed into the Danielson Framework for Teaching. Charlotte Danielson's research and work has been influential in thinking about the differentiated model of instruction. And anyone who cares to look at the minutes from the committee, there are links included in the minutes so people can go and read more about this particular set of concerns for evaluation. He, Marvin, shared with us that, of course, as we've been talking about all year, this is a time of transition as we move towards the Common Core learning standards really being fully implemented and understood by, within the school, by the teaching staff, by faculty members, but also by families. He recognized that for some people, they may look at the new standards and find them difficult to, to manage in terms of their own children's learning, as others may find them not rigorous enough. And so he said, we're in this sort of interesting time of transition in terms of the interface between parents and the school district, and that we need to be mindful of that. That then opened up into a much broader conversation around the board's role in communicating with stakeholders in the district around the changes that are underway. Diane, our colleague, talked about how important it can be for us as board members to be active observers and participants in the work of the district, making an effort, as I know we all do, to be there for big occasions like commencement or events that are well-publicized, but perhaps also to connect more with principals and with Joe, to understand what's happening on a day-to-day basis, opportunities to go into classrooms and presentations are going on, or in the schools more generally, when we're invited, when, when there's an opportunity for us to, really to learn more about what's happening at a very local level in the classroom. Marvin also shared with us something that we heard about earlier tonight, the, the visit to the Lake Avenue Elementary School in Saratoga Springs to look at the rollout of the pilot curriculum for Project Lead the Way in the elementary school there. There is a good momentum moving forward towards having our curriculum certified, seeking national certification, and the Gateway to Technology Advisory Council being convened, is being built right now for that purpose. We identified for our ongoing agenda that we will try to speak with Principal Brett King to understand his perspective on the issues that have been raised from, from the parents who've come to our meetings. Laura has, again, sort of thrown out the challenging question of the timetables for when do students start their school day? Apparently, that's something that's been talked about for many years, so everything old is new again. We're coming back to it. The, the sort of larger emphasis on differentiated learning will continue to form part of our discussion moving forward. I think that's, those are the top items on our agenda.
Very good. Questions for curriculum?
I would just share with you that my most recent county superintendent's meeting, the distinguished superintendent from the Arlington Central School District, raised the issue, and it is now a countywide topic of conversation as it piqued much interest amongst the group, so.
Your start time?
Excuse me?
Your start?
Yes.
Well, it was in the New York Times, front page.
There you go. So I'll let you know what I hear from that group, as well as regale you with tales of studying that issue. Well done.
Dust off those.
Get those files out.
Very good. That's a lot of good conversations, so thanks for that report. And I will also, I will just say, you know, it seems like a small thing, but I appreciate that point about board members trying to attend events we've been invited to. It can be challenging, of course, for all volunteers, Belver, many other responsibilities and including attending events that relate to our own children. But the times that I have done that personally, I have found very gratifying, especially since they're not necessarily things that I would find myself at otherwise, so I think that is a good point. Thank you. We move on now to finance committee minutes, and really, most of those minutes we've covered as we've discussed the budget. So I will just highlight that the district was informed by Assemblyman Kevin Cahill's office that we will be receiving a $50,000 one-time bullet grant that was put into the budget. And we don't, they're not tied to a specific purpose, and the current thinking is to apply it to enhancing technology in schools. So we have some flexibility with that money, so we appreciate the efforts of Assemblyman Cahill in earmarking that money for our district. And again, just to reiterate, some of the conversation about fund balance always is ongoing and needs to always be monitored closely and in close consultation with the finance committee, Joe, Tom, to manage that fund balance properly year to year. So we don't expect it's going to grow as much because we are spending closer to our revenue plan in the past. So that's something we're careful about. Any questions for finance? Okay, can we move on to our comments? Good news? There's some very good news, Mark.
Wow, this comment on the musical this past weekend, it was really a wonderful show. This was probably the single most participation by any, you know, of any, in any extracurricular activity, something like service students involved. I just commend the adults involved, Mr. Nugent, Mrs. Lick, Mrs. Nally, Mrs. Sutherland, and Mrs. Anderson, for all their hard work. I know, because my kids were, you know, principal performers in the show, they saw a lot more of what was going on behind the scenes than I had in other years and, you know, just many, many hours of work beyond the school day that goes into the show, so it was really a really great experience for them.
Very good. Yes, and I will have to say, I've just always impressed year to year how the talents, the many talents of our students, and it really is fantastic to see their hard work and then, you know, whether it's the poise and their singing ability, the dramatic flair, the humor, the musical abilities. I mean, it really is a wonderful display of fantastically talented kids and coming together. It's just really a great thing, and your kids were fantastic. Really tremendous.
I just want to second the, the sense of real pride that I think we, as a community, should feel in the tremendous enterprise that puts together that show. And also, we did just receive notification of senior colleagues in the faculty's retirement at our last meeting, and I, I think to recognize the tremendous years of leadership, professionalism, and dedication of both Mrs. Sutherland and Mr. Nugent, particularly Mr. Nugent. What has he produced, 33 spring musicals? It's an extraordinary legacy to leave to the district, and the drama club will certainly be, you know, it'll be, those will be hard shoes to fill.
Absolutely. So, very good.
I've got one more. I also enjoyed the play tremendously. It was really fun. I laughed, laughed. And at chancellor, I was just reading the newsletter, and the PE department has just updated their webpage, which I give great credit to Kevin Yarnell, I'm supposing, but it's terrific. He's got the national standards for, for PE and the New York State standards and what they're doing in terms of the rocket climbing, and it's, it's really nice to see that he's got it right.
Very good.
I'm too.
Excellent. Any other good news to share? All right, and we move on to old business. Does anyone have any items for old business? All right, and we move on to poll comment. Any comments for the poll?
Should be, should be a chance, Dave.
Speechless.
I was a little late last night watching.
Oh, yeah.
Woke up with 30 seconds left.
It's all that matters.
Now, to other, does anyone have any items for other?
This is other. Joe, I'm wondering if you could give us any feedback or anything from the state test that we administered this week? And if not, that's fine, I didn't ask you ahead of time, but if you can't, then I'm wondering if.
You'll have to read it, you'll have to read it in The Observer, because they're, they're running a hard-hitting piece on, on that particular topic upcoming.
I hope we get a lot of details from the principal next time, but I think.
Yeah. Just to be, to be brief, we add, I believe, 11 students refused to take, to take tests up from, I think, three from the year before. I think last year we had three in the middle school and none in the elementary schools, so we had, we had some additional, I think we had five in the, in the elementary school this year and six in the, in the middle school. We, we allowed students whose, whose parents informed us that their children were refusing the test to, to leave the room and go to a, to an alternate setting and, and read as opposed to the sit-and-stare concept that some, some school districts practiced, then in fairness to, to all of them with negligible guidance from the State Education Department as to, to what to do in that circumstance. So we, we had a modest bump in the numbers, but still, you know, there's, there's a 95% threshold that, that you're supposed to have at least 95% or better of your students there for the test, and that we weren't even close. I think we, I think the total number for us was like 2%, so, although other school districts had considerably more than 95%, more than 5% of their students not, not sit for the test, but that was not our, that was not our situation. I'm not sure what else I can tell you about that.
What happens in the case where they don't make the 95%?
Well, they take the superintendent out in front of the building. There's a couple flogging, and they leave the stocks and pillars up for about a week or two. Yeah, I'm not, honestly, I'm not really sure, because it never crossed my mind that we'd have that many kids not take the test, but some school districts were concerned about it. There were school districts on Long Island that had a lot of kids who didn't take the exam, but again, what's going to come of it, what's, what's come of three cores of this stuff that's come out of the State Education Department surrounding, you know, Common Core? You know, it's like, every time you turn around, there's some, some waffling on this or some change on that or some redirect on this. So I, you know, I think a lot of us have got to the point where we're not losing a lot of sleep over this stuff anymore. We may have last year, but this year, it's kind of like, you know, we'll do our best and it'll be what it'll be. That's, that's a snapshot.
All right, well, I'm sure they'll provide.
Right.
The principals provide details.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what more than that they're going to provide you, but they would certainly, well, there'll be a whole regimen of math testing that will, will occur when we, when we come back from.
I guess I'm curious if some of the timing issues were fixed or how this.
Yeah, apparently, yeah, that, no, thank you. Yeah, apparently, the, the issue that we talked about last year regarding the directions and the multitude of different booklets and different sets of direction, apparently that had been addressed. There were only, there was only one booklet per day, is my understanding. Some of the days last year had like multiple booklets, so it seemed like that part of it had been addressed. Beyond that, yeah, they'll, they'll be able to fill you in with more details, sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's important if we keep up to date on any changes or things that we don't like that we.
Absolutely, sure.
You've got finance issues.
Yeah. Wrong text.
So we'll look to hear more about that from the principals, we can just stay and sit. And, you know, we included that in our own critique of, of, you know, the whole package to, to the governor and state legislature and the commissioner, so I think you're right. You know, so practically how it's working is one of those. So, all right, any other items under other? Great, then we move on to our action items. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution? Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby adopts the proposed budget for the 2014-15 school year in the amount of $30,851,358 and authorizes the following proposition to be placed on the ballot at the annual meeting on May 20th, 2014. Shall the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District be authorized to expend the sums of money which will be required for school district purposes for the 2014-2015 school year in the amount of $30,851,358 and to levy the necessary tax therefor?
Sold.
By Mark. Seconded by Lisa. All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2013 school year?
Sold.
By Mark. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act, Patricia Danneman, to commence honor about September 9th, 2014, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of her accrued sick leave, and thereafter such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave through September 2015.
Sold.
By Mark. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the donation of an Artly flute, model 45-00830, with an estimated value of $200 from RHS alumna Sarah Hedy. alumna Sarah Hedy, as stipulated in the attached email?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? Well, thanks to Ms. Hedy, that was very generous of her, and it was a lovely email, expressing a pleasure coming back to the school, so thank you to her for that donation. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Victor Britton as a teacher-coach for a short-term duration commencing March 27th, 2014 through April 24th, 2014, in accordance with the Arte salary schedule for 2013-14?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment history of particular persons?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? We will now move into executive session. Thank you.